I call the City Council Meeting of October 3, 2017, to order. Deputy Clerk Colleen Norton, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Beckman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brinkman?
Here.
Councilmember Serenick?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Hopping?
Here.
Councilmember Valdez?
Present.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could take a small break in the agenda for a moment. I'm going to ask if you'd join me in a moment of silence for each of us to think about and offer whatever our thoughts could be for the terrible tragedy in Las Vegas for the victims, the friends and family of victims who themselves have become victims by this tragedy. It's something I believe that our moment of silence might be helpful. This brings us to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Approval of the Agenda. And at the request of staff, they would like to pull Item 5B from the Consent Agenda. That's the one that concerned the SROs and had been -- it's the request of the Chief of Police to pull it because he'd like to go back and present some additional information in it when it comes forward. So unless there's any objections, then Item 5B will just be pulled, and I'll try to keep then C remaining C for the agenda. This brings us to Agenda Item Four, which is Public Comment. Public comment's an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions that are not part of the public hearings, and tonight we do not have any public hearings. An immediate response should not be expected. We ask that anyone who would like to speak during the public comment, please sign in on the green public comment card. It really helps us manage the meeting and also to keep track of who it was that appeared in front of council. There's a sheet, comment sheet, being brought to me now. We expect the comments to be civil. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. There is a three-minute time limit. First speaker is Pam Chadburn.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pam Chadburn. I live a block and a half from here. Like four things, if I can get them in. The first thing is I wanted to talk about 5C, which is Approval of the August 15 Regular Meeting Minutes. Actually, I had them as September 19 in the minutes, so I wanted to commend whoever wrote up public comment for that meeting. It got all three of my topics in there with a lot of comments about what I said. I really, really appreciate when I come down here and say something that somebody actually recorded it at some level that's understandable and where what my intent was is somewhat clear. So thanks to staff, clerk, whoever helped do this. I like that part, and when you vote to approve, I hope you do approve that part. Second, Ordinance 28, amending Chapter Four, Title Six, for Knives. My understanding, it looks like this is a state ordinance, but I'm going to tell you I don't want switch blades and gravity knives approved. I am not safer when more weapons are legal in any way. I am not safer, and I don't support that. Third, Ordinance 29, the Fee Schedule. I'm unclear, the memo that was in there is still proposed or talked about, it was September 9th or 11th, something like that memo, proposed the three-step approach, and I don't know whether this actually does the 100% that council talked about in the study session. I'm for the three-step approach because I think that gives staff a better chance of not overrunning the target, of not exceeding the 100% recuperation, recovery of the costs. So I liked the staff's proposal to step it up and learn how to increase those fees. I was unclear about what this is tonight. Last, oh, and the timer's not on. Okay, okay. So last, the Nobel Prize last week for Medicine and Physiology went to three American scientists who 30 years ago nailed down that we have a circadian rhythm. In fact, all animals tend to respond to light, and it's physiological. We have no will about it. It is what happens to us. Light affects our hormones. And in a couple of these articles from The Independent in the U.K., Energy, Health, and Fertility: Alertness, Hunger, Metabolism, Fertility, Mood, and Other Physiological Conditions Including Disease. So NPR mentions that. And that's because, and for one thing, that's very important to women, I think breast cancer. Light at night suppresses melatonin, and melatonin changes the way estrogen is expressed in the female body, and that increases, according to some studies, when they continue, the risk for breast cancer. There were 640,000 cases of breast cancer worldwide in 1980, and there are millions now. Why? Because we have light at night, among other things. So I wanted to ask council to bring back, the lighting ordinance is based on the Model Lighting Ordinance by the Illuminating Engineering Society in coordination with the International Dark Sky Association. We repealed it, and you, the council, repealed it in 2011. That was after it had been in effect for 10 years. That was a bad mistake. You need to bring that back. And also, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design advocates good lighting. So, and you're talking about replacing streetlights. We need a better lighting ordinance. Please consider that. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. That's everyone who has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that failed to sign that would like to speak? Give you the opportunity. This brings us to Agenda Item Five, which are the Consent Agenda Items. And there are three items, A, B, and C. Reminder, we removed B at the request of staff. And C, I'm looking, and I was assistant here on council's dais, that it's September 19 on our legislative information, but the calendar's wrong, the agenda is wrong. So we're going to be--
I'll correct it and repost it.
It will be September 19 would be the correct. Okay. Consent Agenda Items may be adopted by a single motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any Consent Agenda Item may be removed at the request of a council member. Agenda Item A is Resolution 41-2017. That's a resolution approving the 2018 Highline Business Improvement District Operating Plan and Budget. B has been removed. C is ID 17-258, and the correct title will be Approval of the September 19, 2017 Regular Meeting Minutes, and that is the title on the communication.
Mr. Chairman, I move Approval of Consent Agenda Items 5A and 5C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor.
This brings us to Agenda Item Six, Ordinances for First Reading. And there are a number of them tonight. The first six have to do with the budget. Those are Items A through F. And before I call for the first item, the Finance Director would like to give us a few slides, about six or seven slides, that relate to all of them to refresh our memory, and then we can go through them one at a time. So Tiffany Houdon, our Finance Director. And we know the projector behind us is not, it may not be working at all for this, so we'll see. Yeah, I'm not seeing it on the TV either, so. There we go.
There we go. There we go.
Good evening, Council. I apologize for taking the majority of the evening tonight with my six ordinances. However, they are very important, I think, to everyone involved. So if you'll just give me a couple of minutes, I'll go through a few slides, kind of highlight some things that we felt was important to touch on, from the proposed budget sessions to tonight's six ordinances. So a couple of highlights that I wanted to touch on is, for the audience, council did have budget hearings September 11th, 12th, and 13th in the evenings. It was about 10 hours or so of discussion and review of all funds related to the city. Some important things are, we did maintain a balanced budget in the general fund, meaning our expenditures are less than our revenues. And we also did meet our target of 17% of fund balance reserve in the general fund as well. I think one thing that we need to note is that there is some constrained investment in infrastructure, as we talked about the Capital Projects Fund. We kind of showed a five-year plan on a fiscally constrained Capital Projects Fund. So there were some constraints in investment in infrastructure in those. There were 14 total policy questions. The three larger ones, if you will, were related to employee compensation and benefits. We also proposed three new police officers for the city, and then a GIS technician, which will actually be paid out of the sewer fund. As for fees for 2018, we have a few changes to our fee schedule. The one thing that I did want to note is, as we discussed, we're not proposing a fee increase for sewer fees in 2018. We are increasing the stormwater fee from $32 to $33 for a single-family residence. It's about a dollar. Well, it is exactly a dollar increase. As far as community development and engineering fees, I know I did attach a memo that was presented to council on September 13 related to these two fees. We did propose a phase-in, three-year phase-in of fees to get to a 20% cost recovery. After discussions during that meeting, council, or staff revised the fee increase to a 50% cost recovery, and that would be in 2018. So a pretty substantial increase in the fees for those two. Please note that engineering fees, we do not currently charge those, so that is a new fee that would begin in 2018.
I thought we, I thought we went the whole thing at once.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the council direction there at the end of the three days was to go to 100% recovery, and I think after discussions here with our city attorney and internal staff, we are recommending the 50% recovery. I did send an email to all of council here last week, kind of explaining the rationale for that, but I won't let the city attorney speak up here, but I think we're just uncomfortable with the systems that we have in place to legally justify and defend, quite honestly, going to 100% at this point in time. So the recommendation was to go to 50%, do a very typical cost-of-service study. That would be the mechanism then that could, we could use to justify ultimately going to 100% and legally defend that.
Okay, thank you.
Some changes that we, as staff, have made from the proposed budget that was presented to council. There's a few changes related to revenues and expenditures. The main increase in revenues is due to the change in the fee structure for community development and engineering fees. That, we had actually put in about 125,000 additional revenues in the budget, but if we're going to go to 50% cost recovery, we're estimating that would bring in an additional 417,000. So that was a pretty large increase. The other change was, we received assessed value revisions from the counties very late in August, and we weren't able to review those before the budget hearings. So there was a slight change, a slight reduction in the estimated property tax revenues for the city, so that was a decrease. And then, in conjunction with that, due to the fire partner agreements, they rely on property tax information as well, and because of that adjustment, it decreased the revenues from the partners as well, for about 50,000. As far as expenditures, the one thing that we did add was a $50,000 expense for a cost-of-service study, which is what City Manager Ralph was referring to a few minutes ago, related to the community development and engineering fee study. And then there were a few miscellaneous changes that resulted in a reduction of about 3,600. So all in all, the changes from the proposed budget to the budget that you have in front of you is a revenue increase of 326,000 roughly, and an expenditure increase of about 46,000. There were a couple of revisions to the sewer fund. Revenues, there were no change. As far as expenditures, staff was directed to reduce the sewer budget by $4 million related to the biogas project. And I've noted on there that the project is going to be reviewed by council in 2018, and a supplemental appropriation will be required to fund this project if that is the desire of the two councils. The other thing that we did add to this is, we increased the 2018 budget by 190,000. That's the 50% share of 380,000 for the engineering costs related to the biogas project, which will allow additional information to be brought forward to council in 2018. This is my last slide. I tried to keep them short. There was a request to add some budget provisos, so we did incorporate those into the ordinance that you have before you. One of them is the visioning project of $100,000. Council directed staff that we would not proceed with this until council approves the scope and the deliverables on this project. Another one is 115,000 for the relocation of the fire permit review, or fire permit staff. That as well will not be spent until additional information or options are reviewed and presented to council. And then the third one is related to open space. We had a policy question requesting a total of 350,000 related to projects. 100,000 of this will not be spent until a plan with specific projects is approved by city council. And further, this plan must be provided by August 31, council. So that's kind of the short and sweet of it, so I am happy to answer any questions.
If we have questions on any of these, they're also covered in one of those six as we, as we bring them down through, let's talk about, just about process a little bit. We have six budget items. We've studied them all at council, other council study times. We just had your presentation. Did you have anything specific that you wanted to present to each of those six, or should we stand by and see if council, as they come up, has questions?
I did not have anything specific for each item.
Okay, great. I think council does have some questions, maybe on some of these, so.
Sure.
That'll, that'll be something we'll deal with as we go along. Thank you, Tiffany. So with that, Agenda Item 6A is Ordinance 23-2017. It's an ordinance on first reading, to be known as the Annual Appropriation Bill, adopting the annual budget for all municipal purposes of the City of Littleton Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. As I said, this matter's been discussed unless somebody has questions for the staff. If I could get a motion and a second, we could have discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt on first reading the ordinance known as the Annual Appropriation Bill, adopting the annual budget for all municipal purposes of the City of Littleton Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018, and to schedule a public hearing for October 17, 2017, at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Are we ready to vote?
The vote is six to one, with Councilmember Clerk voting no. The motion carries.
This brings us to Agenda Item B. This is an ordinance on first reading, Ordinance 27-2017. It's an ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2018 Littleton Stormwater and Flood Management Utility Enterprise Budget. Again, is there any questions that we have with staff? If I could get a motion and a second, we could have additional discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2018 City of Littleton Stormwater and Flood Management Utility Enterprise Budget, and schedule a public hearing for October 17, 2017, at 6:30 p.m.
Peggy has the second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote?
The vote is six to one, with Councilmember Clark voting no.
This brings us to Agenda Item C. This is Ordinance 26-2017. It's an ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2018 Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise Budget. Are there any questions of staff? If I could get a motion and a second, we could have discussion if necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve on first reading an ordinance adopting the 2018 Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise Fund Budget, and schedule a public hearing for October 17, 2017, at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, we ready to vote?
The vote is six to one, with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries.
Agenda Item D is Ordinance 25-2017. This is also an ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2018 Littleton Emergency Medical Transportation Enterprise Budget. Are there any questions of staff?
Yes. Didn't know if the chief or others would want to comment, or Tiffany, you'd want to comment on the recoverability of some of the costs in there in that write-off.
For the revenues for the EMS fund? I think as far as revenues, we recoup revenue from private payers, Medicare, Medicaid, and insurance. The one thing that we do struggle with is Medicare and Medicaid is capped at the amount that we can recoup. They do increase, and they have decreased before, but they do typically increase it roughly 2% to 3% annually. I think the biggest issue with that is, our fees may be $1,000 for an ambulance transport, but Medicare and Medicaid will only reimburse us for about $250 or $350. Medicaid is actually about $150. So we do have to take that into account whenever we're estimating our revenues for the EMS fund.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the Finance Director?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve on first reading the ordinance adopting the 2018 Littleton Emergency Medical Transportation Enterprise Fund Budget, and schedule a public hearing for October 17, 2017, at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any additional discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote?
The motion is seven in favor. The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
This brings us to Agenda Item E. This is an ordinance 24-2017, an ordinance on first reading, establishing the tax levy to defray the costs of municipal government of the City of Littleton Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the city's fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. Do we have any questions of staff?
Just one.
Go ahead.
How long has the mill levy been at 6.662?
Since 1991, I believe.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for staff? Can I get a motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt on first reading the ordinance establishing the tax levy of 6.662 mills to defray the costs of municipal government of the City of Littleton Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the city's fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018, and schedule a public hearing for November 21, 2017, at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor.
This brings us to Agenda Item F. This is a matter that's also been discussed previously. It's an ordinance 29-2017. It's an ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2018 Fee Schedule. Do we have questions of staff? Looks like we do.
Hold your horses. Almost.
Yes.
Thank you, Tiffany. I know that, at least based on your summary comments earlier, you're looking at a 50% cost recovery, along with a cost analysis that will take place so that we can get to 100%. Do we need to wait? Do we need to wait the entire year, or can some of that happen once we have that study? And maybe it's also a question to the city attorney.
Let me start here, I guess. It would be our intent as staff, assuming the council's moves with the recommendation here, to put the RFP out here at the very beginning of the year so that we could actually have the results in time for probably, I'm guessing, late spring. That would be an opportune time in my mind so that we'll have some track history with the new fee schedule. It'll be, we'll have kind of the year-end results. Finance can present to you kind of an updated forecast of where we're in the budget. We did talk during the three days of the budget discussion. That might be an opportunity. If there's additional revenue, you might want to appropriate it for some special purpose or projects. So I think that cost-of-service study would be an opportune time for you then to make a decision about how you want to tackle the rest of that recovery rate. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you. Second question is, in some areas, we have community development activity, particularly when it deals with roof inspections is one I'm aware of, where we contract out as the city for services. I'm assuming in those instances, we don't necessarily have to wait for an additional cost of service, that the fee schedule is looking at the full cost recovery on those that are farmed out.
Councilmen, members of the council, the answer is yes. We could look. In many cities who do that, they will basically take fees for where they contract out, and they will impose those fees on applicants. And there, the cost-of-service study might look at what the city's indirect costs might be that could be added on to it, but the actual fee itself could be charged at this point.
Okay. And it's an extensive fee study, or fee schedule. Do you know if that has been done in what is before us, or is that something that would yet need to be done?
Councilmember, if I'm understanding the question, yes, we have actually translated the 50% increase down into the fee schedule itself. Is that the question or?
No, the question is where we contract out for services, whether the fee schedule here is reflective of that, those contract rates.
Actually, the contract rates, one example you raised, is in the building department. And so that's not necessarily what was originally discussed. We are suggesting the cost-of-service study be expanded to the building department, but any kind of contract service we have in the development side really isn't applicable in that particular case. But it is a good point. We are looking for, we will look for kind of contract services, make sure there's a direct connection there.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Madam Gerald, you explained earlier today, for public information, if I understood correctly, that Colorado law says that we can only charge recovery costs with those fees, correct? And that we can't. That's why we've kept it at 50%.
Councilmember, happy members of the council, yes. The city can recover its costs, but the city, in essence, cannot charge fees that would cause the city to make a profit. And so the purpose here of the cost-of-service study is to give us legally sustainable fees by where we've looked, for example, on processing a plant. And we would be able to know how much staff time it takes of a planner tech, how much staff time it takes of a planner, how much staff time it takes of an engineer, even indirect costs such as how much time it takes from the finance department, the city attorney's office. All those get built into the study. So at the end of the day, that fee is a legally sustainable amount. If I had to go to court, I could bring in that consultant or the finance department, and we could literally itemize how we got to that cost. And then council would make the decision, based on those maximum supportable fees, what if any percentage council wanted to charge.
Thank you. And I think that's been clear to council, but I wanted public to know as well.
Peggy.
So, somebody retires who's at the top of the pay scale, and we hire somebody, and they're at the bottom of the pay scale. We are now then charging more than it costs us with that new employee?
Couple of comments. Excuse me. First is the importance of the cost-of-service study is to identify the exact positions and their costs associated with a permit service. And so it is something that we can replicate. It is something that is actually eventually pushed down into the payroll system. And when you have somebody who perhaps there's turnover there, that's why you want these systems in place, so that you can adjust that periodically. Today, we have none of those systems in place. And in fact, as we were discussing with council, we weren't charging anything for engineering. And so I think that's the purpose. I might also comment, you know, a lot of cities, they don't necessarily charge 100% recovery. And so I think that's why we, in this particular case, at council's direction, why we need this study to make sure we have a system we can replicate.
So the system we come up with may have a factor that would recognize a variance in the range of what the engineers and so forth are paid?
Yes, in fact. Well, you're going to have a fee schedule that you will set once a year. And so as those staff changes or the cost changes, and you still want 100% recovery, then we would be presenting that information to the council. So in theory, you could have a reduced cost if you're trying to go to 100% recovery, and the council could set a lower schedule of fees to reflect that 100%.
Why 50%? Why not 80%?
Councilmember, these members of the council, the reason for that is, is that our current fees, we kind of basically took our budget and then applied it against the services that we provide to get the amount of the fees. The difficulty with that is, is right now, if I had to defend those fees in court, I cannot connect the actual cost of the services we provide to the actual fee we're charging. The city manager, I, when we discussed this, I know from a legal standpoint, I concluded that I'm fairly comfortable that even if we had to suddenly do this data because somebody sued us, we could sustain the 50% fee. The closer we get above that, I become increasingly concerned because literally, as the city manager indicated, we don't have a system. I don't really have anything I can point to and say, this is the actual cost of this service. Maybe higher, maybe lower. That's the whole, this study will give us that, but right now, I'm comfortable that we can defend across the board the 50%. If we start going above that, I do not have that same comfort level.
So again, the study will be completed when?
Well, my intent would, again, would be probably to put the RFP out here towards the end of the year. We obviously can't expend any funds until the first of the year, but then have that work complete so that, you know, May, June would be an opportunity then for council to see the outcome of that, and then have a discussion about what you might want to do for the balance of the year. You know, you have all sorts of information and decisions to make at that point in time.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that, again, just for, as Bill said earlier, he wants to make sure citizens understand what we're talking about here. We're talking about the, across the city of Littleton, we're all paying for development fees, and the developers are paying less because the rest of us are paying them. And what we're trying to do here is, I want to see the developers pay the entire cost, or at least close to it. I want our city attorney to be comfortable. You know? So, but I do want to reduce the share that the citizens are paying.
Correct.
And we would put a top priority on that, council member. So we'd do everything in our power here to try to get that work complete.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
So I have another question. So we have somebody who's at a low level, sort of low level, doing work, but that person has a supervisor who has a supervisor who may then have another supervisor, as in the city manager and/or the attorney. So are we looking at the big picture?
Councilmember Cole, I can tell you, I've been involved with a number of these studies, and the answer is yes. These studies will look at all of the indirect costs. They'll look at not just the person who might be, the tech who might be doing the initial review. They'll look at the supervisor's costs and what percentage of their time is spent. They'll, yes, they will be asking the attorney exactly, how much percentage of time do you spend on every given item? And they'll be integrating all that in to the cost of service.
I might add, though, that you will see that data. You will see the percentage of each employee. So you will have an opportunity to make a decision whether or not you want to charge a portion of the city manager's time, for example, or whatever level. So we may have our own recommendation as staff, but you'll get to see really how this does play out here for the organization and make some decisions.
Thank you.
So if somebody says it's a certain percentage and it cost them an arm and a leg, we know that that's fairly literal. Could be. Just checking.
Any additional questions of staff? I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the ordinance on first reading, adopting the 2018 fee schedule, and to schedule a public hearing for October 17, 2017, at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Not seeing any, ready to vote?
The vote is six to one with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries.
Now.
Now I can leave. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tiffany. This brings us to Agenda Item G, and I want to point out that on our dais is the most recent correct version of the ordinance that we're talking about, Ordinance Number 28. And Agenda Item G is Ordinance 28-2017. It's an ordinance on first reading, amending Chapter 4 of Title VI of the Littleton Municipal Code. The city attorney's office is making the presentation.
Mayor Council, Lena McClan, the Assistant City Attorney, will be making this presentation tonight. She has worked extensively with our police department and staff on this particular ordinance and the changes in state law.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I unfortunately do not have a fancy PowerPoint presentation for you this evening, but just as some background about this, as you may have seen in the council communication, in March, the governor of Colorado signed Senate Bill 17008, which became effective in early August. This was amending the state statute, specifically Colorado Revised Statute Sections 18-12-101 and 18-12-102, to remove the definitions of gravity knife and switchblade knife in both the definitions and in the possessing a dangerous or illegal weapon statute. What we're proposing is to amend our Littleton Municipal Code to harmonize the city code with this change in state statute. Specifically, this would be Sections 6-4-151 and 6-4-154 of the Littleton Municipal Code, specifically removing the definitions of gravity knife and switchblade knife, and the definitions or the references to both of those in the definition of illegal weapon. And in 6-4-154, Subsection A, certain knives prohibited, would be removing that section in reference to those types of knives. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Bill.
Does this mean that if, and I understand what it says, is that it has been illegal to carry a switchblade, and now it will be legal to have one? Is that the essence?
Yeah, I would say that would be the essence.
But if you attack somebody with a switchblade, is that still assault with a deadly weapon, or is it just assault?
Councilmember, happy members of the council, generally, if you saw a person with any kind of weapon and you caused injury, that's going to be what we would call an aggravated assault or an assault with a deadly weapon. This simply takes it out of the category of prohibited weapons, but it still is going to be a crime if you use that, just like if you were to use a hammer or an iPad to hit somebody with and cause injury. You could be prosecuted, and this will not change that. It simply is that the legislature and the governor have amended the weapons code to delete these as prohibited weapons to carry. So they now really become more the status, for example, like a handgun. You can carry it, but if you use it in an offense, it's a prosecutable crime, and this would be no different.
Okay, thank you.
And this ordinance has been reviewed by the police department, and we've worked extensively with the police department on this.
Counsel, I'd like to suggest that we put this to a study session. If we're going to go in and open up the ordinance to make it compatible with state law, I think we ought to fix the whole ordinance. There's a couple of sections in here that looks like it refers to state statutes that have been repealed. I'm curious on what an inanimate object weapon is as opposed to an inanimate weapon. We've got a section here that prohibits the display of pistols and revolvers with barrels longer or shorter than 12 inches. I didn't know that you could buy a pistol with a barrel longer than 12 inches. So if we're going to go and update this section, I think we ought to fix the whole thing rather than picking two particular pieces and leaving some other sections that don't make any sense. So I'd recommend that this come back to us on a study session. I think it's complex enough to merit that.
Does council have support for that request by Councilmember Clark to do a study session on this whole entire issue?
I'd support him on that. I would like to see a clean ordinance come to us. Or there's, or what Councilman Clark just said, do you agree with some of those issues, that there's some outdated items in here?
I would have to look at it myself, but certainly, if that's something the council would like, I would be happy to do that research for you.
Is there any time sensitivity on this, or do we have time for a study session?
It's not my understanding that there's a time sensitivity, no.
But what did you say?
It's not my understanding that there's a time sensitivity, at least on our end, no.
But if we're trying to clean it up, when do we think we could do that? When might this come back to us?
Well, I could, excuse me, I could work with the city attorney and look at our tentative calendar with council. My guess is that it's probably going to be at the earliest, late November, probably December, just based on all the other items we've got teed up right now.
And Mayor Council, I would agree with that, because one of the issues in terms of going back and looking over our entire code on weapons is, there may be a number of things outdated, but I would expect that's going to not just require a study session, but there's a number of interest groups who have a lot of interest in that. So I can imagine that, I am guessing that we would be close to the end of the year before we get back, just because when we deal with weapons and the length of barrels and things, while that may seem a very simple issue, it really isn't. It gets into a number of complexities that we'll have to work through.
So another question. So do we have, I wish we had exec sessions, but maybe you can answer this publicly. Do we have any kind of exposure jeopardy by delaying this?
Councilmember Cole, members of the council, the only reason we brought this particular change by itself is because we wanted to make it as efficient and easy as possible, quite honestly, for the officer on the street. It creates sometimes a problem when you have one provision in the city code and another provision in state statute, the officer's looking at, okay, which do I deal with? So we simply looked at this one change in isolation to bring the code into harmony with the state statute. We can certainly come back and look at this change by itself, or this change in conjunction with the whole weapons code. It's just, I think the weapons code analysis is going to be a more complicated analysis because I don't think there's any secret that when we get into weapons, and particularly firearms, it invokes a number of issues.
When does state statute go into effect on this?
It went into effect in August.
Okay.
I would suggest that we go ahead and pass or take action on this. I won't speak for the action of the council, but take action on this and the particular issue before us, and then also remand the rest of this back to staff to take a look at the rest of these. Do both of them. So I would go ahead and move to adopt the first reading. So, I would go ahead and move to adopt the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 4, Title 6 of the Littleton Municipal Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I think that study session is a great idea, but I'm agreeing that, you know, we put things off and put things off, and this was a very specific, while it does create issues for the citizens as well as for officers when we have our own way of doing things in things that may not be necessary to do it. So, I support make this, get this passed through tonight as first reading, and also request a study session in the future. And that would put two and two in terms of support for that. Does anyone else support what I'm asking for and Bill's asking for versus Doug and Jerry at this point?
I support it.
Yeah.
You're okay with that? Okay, so it sounds like we got a plan. We have a motion and a second. At this time, is there additional discussion? Seeing none, ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries.
This brings us to Agenda Item H, and Agenda Item H and I are related, and the order that they're presented, H then I, is the order that we need to act on them tonight in order for that to work, I understand. And Steve Kemp will be making the presentation. Let me announce what it is. Agenda Item H is Ordinance 31-2017. It's an ordinance on first reading authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services between the City of Littleton, Littleton Fire Protection District and Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District. Council, City Attorney Steve Kemp will present.
Mayor, Council, this came to you on the September 19 meeting for instructing the City Attorney and staff to develop an amendment, two things, A, an amendment to the existing intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton, Littleton Fire Protection, and Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District, and this is in regards to Paragraph 5 and how dispatch services are provided under that agreement. The second instruction was to work with the South Metro Fire and Rescue District on an intergovernmental agreement for dispatch services with that district. So, taking the H item is the amendment to the existing intergovernmental agreement. And for purposes of background more for the citizens, because I know councils aware of this, the city has had for many, many years an intergovernmental agreement with the Littleton Fire Protection District and the Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District for the provision of fire protection and emergency services in those two districts. And those two districts pay the city for those services. The city also has had some separate agreements, one with the Cunningham Fire District and with some private parties. None of those are the subject of what's here tonight, just this one intergovernmental agreement. Now, under the intergovernmental agreement, as it's currently written, the city provides the dispatch services. The dispatch services then are charged per call to each of the other districts, and they pay the city for those calls. Earlier this year, a dispute arose between the two districts and the city. The two districts had significant concerns about, A, the cost of the agreement, and particularly the cost of dispatch, because it is so much greater than the cost of dispatch in the South Metro Fire District. They also had concerns about the dispatch standards and dispatch operation in general. And let's sort of break down those two concerns. The concern over cost is based on the fact that the South Metro, and I'm just going to use South Metro referring to the South Metro Fire and Rescue District, cost per call is $58.46. You can see from the chart that was part of the council communication, our cost is roughly $25 a call more. So, the districts are saying, wait a second, this would save a significant amount of money to our ratepayers, who have to pay those taxes. City, why aren't you looking at this? And so, the parties ultimately went to a mediation in front of John Hayes. John Hayes is a longtime respected municipal attorney, one of the premier people in the municipal law profession, and Mr. Hayes heard out all three parties, as the city said, listen, we have the right to do it however we want. And Mr. Hayes' recommendation was that, as I said in the council communication, he encouraged the parties to look at this as the best option for providing dispatch services. I would tell you from a liability standpoint, I think certainly this amendment and then the subsequent agreement with South Metro is in the best interests of the city. It's in the best interests of the city, not just from a cost standpoint. And I recognize, the city's here to serve its citizens, and cost isn't the only driver. But this has a lower cost. The South Metro Fire and Rescue District has a nationally certified dispatch operation, and quite honestly, the city is extremely stretched in our provision of dispatch services. Certainly, the fire chief could address that in great detail, but we are limited in our ability to provide dispatch services. The fact is, this intergovernmental agreement also has a second benefit. All of the revenue right now comes into the city, and then the city expends that revenue. With the proposed amendment and the subsequent South Metro agreement, what this would do is each party will be paying South Metro independently. The city will not be responsible for Littleton Fire Protection District paying South Metro, and the city will not be responsible for Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District paying South Metro. If they don't pay, it won't affect the city's relationship with South Metro. Each party will be responsible themselves. What this does is those revenues not coming into the city in the long term, not for this year, not for next year, but in future years, will have the potential of helping the city avoid the issue of coming up against its table revenue limit. This will be one piece, a very small piece, albeit, but a piece in addressing that issue as well. And finally, what this does is that this deals with a major issue that the other two parties have had under the existing agreement. Now, the option the other two parties do have would be to simply, before November 1, would be to simply give the city notice of its intent to terminate the agreement effective January 1, 2019, at which point, there is no fire partnership agreement, there is no revenue to the city for that agreement, and the city would then be in the issue of having to address its fire services in some other manner. And for all of those reasons, in accordance with your direction on the September 19 meeting, I have brought the Second Amendment to the IGA to you tonight. Now, I'd like to go ahead and address the South Metro agreement, because even though you're going to vote on those separately, I think it's more efficient to address them together. The city had had earlier negotiations with South Metro, and when this issue did not come to pass, those ended. So, we went back to South Metro. I spent a lot of time with their lawyer, and in accordance with the council instruction, one was any agreement with South Metro needs to be consistent with the amendment to the existing intergovernmental agreement. The original South Metro agreement had the city responsible for paying everyone's cost. That doesn't work for the city, because it doesn't really address the city's needs to only be responsible for its costs, not have all these other revenues coming in that we then have to account for and then pay out. Secondly, it really doesn't deal with the city's needs of, well, what happens if Littleton Fire Protection or Highlands Ranch Metropolitan doesn't pay their bill to us? One, hook still for the bill with South Metro, and we have to be the collection agency. This addresses that. It also provides a fixed cost for 2018, and then subsequent years, costs will be adjusted on the Denver Regional Consumer Price Index as established by the U.S. Department of Labor. And frankly, the U.S. Department of Labor Consumer Price Index generally has been reflective of an extremely low inflation rate. Now, we also took, and in fact, I'll be putting them in the, I legislate for the second read, but I just got the figures today, the city uses a rolling three-year average of calls. And as you know, we ended the quarters, so we now have two full years, three-quarters of a year in an estimate. And based on those figures, as reviewed by the Finance Department, we are now showing that the savings in terms of using South Metro would actually be $450,000. So, the savings have slightly increased over the existing savings that were projected before the third quarter came in. And that, those savings are based upon the actual calls and that rolling three-year period, and then the projection for the fourth quarter. And so, that is the current status of that. The South Metro intergovernmental agreement, there is one area that was a bit of a change that we will be working through, and that is, South Metro only has six dispatch vacancies. We have roughly 12 employees to address. What is normally done, and what is proposed in this agreement, would be South Metro will allow any City of Littleton employee to apply for those positions. They'll have to go through their normal recruitment and background check process, which is what virtually any employer would do. And you do that because what if the City of Littleton didn't do a very good job? Suddenly now, you become liable for that employee once you hire them. The city does have some open positions in police dispatch. We will certainly look at taking any employee who doesn't have those positions and seeing if they can end up, and we can, they'll fit in the positions for police dispatch. Again, they have to go through that same application, background check, criminal history check, and we will address that. Finally, if there's other employees, I have been working with the city manager and the city staff on programs to address those. That's an internal Littleton issue. We will certainly, we're working on the mechanics and the cost of that, and without getting in, certainly, the city manager can address that, but we will be looking at if there's any other employees who don't have a place, how do we address those employees? The South Metro agreement is a four-year agreement. The city does have the ability to terminate the agreement on one year's notice. And the South Metro agreement is an agreement for dispatch services. I know other terms have been used. We're not talking about any other thing right now but dispatch services. And that's what both the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement and the South Metro agreement is, is dispatch services. There's information in your council communications, and I would certainly be pleased to address any other questions that the council may have.
So, what questions do we have of the City Attorney? Not seeing any additional questions. Can I get a motion and a second for Ordinance 31-2017?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance on first reading authorizing the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services between the City of Littleton, Littleton Fire Protection District and the Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District, and to schedule a second reading and public hearing on October 17, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Page 2 from the Littleton Fire Rescue Emergency Services Master Plan states that the amount of time that the Littleton Fire Rescue Communication Center uses to dispatch Fire Department response units is less than the national average. Page 3 shows that the performance of the dispatch center also exceeds the contractually agreed to performance standards by the all three partners, or the city and the two partners, which in this case is the same as the so-called national standards, and that is of dispatching a unit within 60 seconds of the phone ringing in 90% or more of the time. The latest Partners Report for August shows on page 6 that the dispatch center performance is better than the national standards and better than the contractual standards of a 60-second dispatch, and has been for the entire year of 2017, every month and cumulative for the year. And that's with the call volume of Cunningham and with the staffing level of nine dispatchers. Now, the standards and coverage and deployment, standards of coverage in a deployment plan that's also dated 2015 comes to the same assessment. It says that the dispatch center time to process a call is less than the national standards. And finally, the Littleton Fire Rescue System Strategic Plan of 2015, which was developed with Fire Department personnel, lists the dispatch center as a strength of the organization on page 22. And in fact, in the plan, none of the nine strategic initiatives or any of their associated objectives or goals addresses the dispatch center in any way. The reality is, our dispatch center is performing fine, and if we didn't put hiring freezes in place, the staffing probably wouldn't be an issue either. The fire union has established a goal of merging with South Metro. In fact, I believe it's a top priority, and they're stating that goal in meetings with council candidates. There was absolutely no mention of any problems with dispatch by the consultants, or the Fire Department personnel, or the master plan, or the strategic plan, or the standards of coverage, or by any of the partners until after the council authorized discussions about merging the entire department with South Metro. And I think the fact that no other options were presented to council other than the South Metro pretty much puts the lie, the claim that this has nothing to do with the merger of the entire Fire Department with South Metro. It has everything to do with the Fire Department with South Metro. Now, our consultant that we hired that came in, came in, analyzed the situation, and recommended to us that we withhold making any action on the dispatch center until we had made a determination of what to do with South Metro. The safety things aren't substantiated either by the reports that are done on an annual basis, or by the master plan that the Fire Department itself put forward, or by its strategic initiatives, its system strategic plan. There's been no mention of any issue with the dispatch center until the issue came up of merging with South Metro. And we have not looked at any other option, none, other than the South Metro. If we were trying to do due diligence, if we were really trying to address costs, I would think that we would look at more than one alternative. We've looked at none. The only alternative we looked at is the dispatch center that's in the same department that the union has the goal of merging with. So, I think this is premature. I think it's out of order. I think the proper order is for us to decide what we want to do with the entire department, merging in conjunction with the partners, and then, depending on that decision, go back and look at different components. I think that moving dispatch now, especially given the fact that none of this was a problem until we started talking about merging, is unfortunate.
Mayor, pro temp.
Well, everybody can connect the dots the way they like to connect the dots, but the reality is, this, we have said consistently, and the Fire Department has said consistently, and I've sat in fire partner meetings for two years, and when the conversations have come up, these are completely two separate issues. They're, they do not overlap. There may be a coincidence or something with the timing on these, although I would argue that a bit too, but you can connect those dots, and you can defend your position based on that. The reality is, we have had problems in that dispatch center for years. I've sat up here and heard about those problems. I've sat up here and heard about those problems. I have been in meetings with fire and heard about those problems. I have been in meetings with staff and heard about those problems. And we have never done anything about it. Part of the reason, it's a budget issue. It's a very expensive fix in there. The problems that are in there, although they not, may not be reflected in the numbers that you're showing from 2015, again, I think that speaks to the quality of, of work that our employees are doing under the circumstances. The reason that this is being considered isn't because the employees aren't doing the, the work right. It's being considered because not only will it save us close to a half a million dollars, but we also have two partners that we've been partners with for 35, 40 years, and they have indicated a preference for this with very strong justification and representation of their citizens as taxpayers. And we also know that we do not have, in the budget, any money to put the repairs, the replacements, and the full staffing that is required to continue the level of service that we need and, and our citizens expect out of that dispatch. So, I think it's interesting also that, that oftentimes, there's comments made about consultants and how consultants are not to be trusted, and consultants aren't, that, why do, why are we, why are we listening to these consultants? We have, we have strong staff, we shouldn't be. But when a consultant says something that helps support your argument, then that consultant has validity. Well, these consultants have not shown to the fire partners that they have the, the power, the ability, pardon me, ability to be able to conduct the type of service that we're requiring. I don't have a lot of credibility in these consultants. And the only reason the consultants put a hold on this is because they felt that it should be considered with the merger. They didn't put a, they didn't suggest that we didn't do this because they had some issue with it happening. They didn't even evaluate it, because we didn't ask them to evaluate it. It wasn't part of their scope of work. So, their decision was fully based on the fact that they wanted, they wanted it to be part of that. And that's where, in many ways, we split in agreement with them. So, I'm, I am supporting this. I think it's high time we do something proactive with this. I think that this is a good decision. I think that the chief is the first one to come down here in a number of years and share this with us, that this is an opportunity and a solution. There aren't other opportunities out there on how to fix this. Sometimes, there are not a lot of choices. Sometimes, there may be one good and a whole bunch of bad, or there may just be one. I think this is a win-win. It's a good choice, and it, and it, in my opinion, is our only choice. This department, South Metro Dispatch, is not only highly accredited, but they are working at a level of professionalism and expertise that I would expect would be the highest level of service for their citizens, consequently, it will be for ours, and that is, that is important and valuable. So, I think that this is a excellent option, an excellent choice, and a good decision for not only the service of this community, but also the fiduciary responsibility that we bear. Thank you.
Do we have additional comments?
Very quickly, just wanted to mention, echoing the fiscal responsibility, also, the city attorney has mentioned liability issue, as well as the safety for citizens and our firefighters. The additional comment I will make is that when the chief came to us, he did present other alternatives that were analyzed and looked at, both with West Metro as well as Denver. And so, there have been other alternatives that were looked at and rejected due to technology issues around communication. And I support this. Thank you.
Do we have any other additional comments from council?
Yeah, I'm, will support this. This is the first reading. I'm very eager to hear what is said during the public hearing on second reading.
Additional comments? Are we ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries.
So, this brings us to the companion piece that already was discussed by the city attorney, its agenda item I, its ordinance 32-2017. It's an ordinance on first reading authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental user agreement to contract for dispatch services for fire and emergency medical services with the South Metro Fire and Medical District. Do we have any other questions of the city attorney and staff on this matter? Is there anything else you'd like to add, Steve?
Mayor, council, no. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. We did spend a fair amount of time both with the South Metro staff and with their lawyer going over this agreement. I've reviewed it. I've also obviously had Ken Feldman review it. I am very satisfied that this agreement is in the best legal interests of the city, and certainly, it's my recommendation that you proceed to adopt first read and proceed on to second read.
Additional questions of the staff? Do I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance on first reading approving the intergovernmental user agreement with the South Metro Fire and Medical District, and to schedule the ordinance for second reading and public hearing on October 17, 2017.
Second.
With a motion and a second as there are additional discussion. Ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor with councilmember Clark voting no. The motion carries.
This brings us to agenda item number seven, which is ordinance for second reading and public hearing, and there are no ordinances for second reading and public hearing tonight. Moves us to agenda item eight, which is general business, and we have no general business items tonight. So, that takes us to nine for comments and reports. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one brief comment. A couple of weeks ago, we performed our very first telephone city hall. We have scheduled here with the council in two weeks at a study session to kind of debrief that. We, as we noted before, we had over 600 people participate in that. Quite honestly, I did not know what to expect. I, I think there's some great successes that came out, but also some lessons learned. I will note, too, that today, we actually posted on our webpage a link to that telephone city hall, so you can see the questions and the response, as you're well aware. We weren't able to answer all 600 questions, so we've kind of aggregated all that and prepared, again, a webpage to try to respond to that. So, an interesting experiment for us, and looking forward to talking to council about that in two weeks. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go down to council and get reports. Let's start with councilmember Hoppin.
Excuse me, just two things tonight. One is that Littleton has had spade of teen suicides lately, and it's really been a tragic thing. Colorado has one of the highest teen suicide rates in the country, and it's really a, there's some mystery to that, but the, as a council, we met with the school board last week, and this was one of the topics of conversation, and there is going to be a community conversation on this, October 10th, from 5:30 to 8:30 at Mission Hills Church. It's 620 South Park Drive. It's open to anybody over the age of 15, and these are our citizens. So, despite the fact they're the school board's students and they have the closest contact with them, I think we need to all show support for this effort to, to assist in the prevention, healing, and education that surrounds it. So, I would encourage that. Secondly, on downtown Littleton listens, the city manager's done a really good job of bringing this Littleton listens mechanism forward, and I really have great hope for it, and the 600 calls were, that was very interesting and rewarding. We heard from a lot of people. Is, we get increasing density, and especially residential density and the commercial density in downtown, there are some conflicts that are going to happen, and I think we ought to pay attention to those as they come forward, and one of those will be noise. We have things downtown like block parties and regular bar events and, and things that happen in commercial areas, and as the commercial core gets closer, or the residential core gets increasingly dense, I sense the fact that there may be conflict emerging from that, and you get people that move into that area. It's kind of like people who move next to an airport and say, gee, there are airplanes overhead. What are we going to have, do now? And they're moving in with their bars and entertainment facilities. So, I think, I don't know what the answer is. I think we just need to be aware of that, and it, it's a critical piece of Littleton's culture, and we need to address that and be proactive in how we approach it in the future. So, that's all I had.
Councilmember Serenick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, at our breakfast with LPS, both administration and board for them, one of the other items that they're looking at is changing some of their start times, and for folks that are concerned about congestion at various points in time, pay attention to some of that. The schedule as to when they're having those meetings are on the Littleton Public School website. In addition, for council particularly, the executive director for the Denver Regional Council of Government, the interviews for hiring to that position are tomorrow afternoon and evening, and hope to have a finalist candidate coming out of that. I do sit on the performance and engagement committee that's doing the interviews on that front. And we did spend a moment of silence for the impact on families and lives in, for the event that happened in Las Vegas this weekend. I spent some time with folks in Henderson, Nevada, the week before, and if folks don't know where that is, that's the south and southeast suburb to Las Vegas. The impact on the committee, community there is tremendous, and as a municipality, one of the things that they are impacted by is the business interruption that is occurring now, and that's one of the reasons why we hold on to reserves, is to address some of those items. And I know that they're going to be stretched on some fronts, and as folks may or may not be traveling, they did close down the gaming tables for a period of time, which impacts the local income there, and it's probably not recovered. So, as we think about the folks, the impact on their community is, is far and beyond the people side of it, as we look at some of the things that we have as fiduciary responsibilities as a municipality. Thank you.
Councilmember Valdez.
Other than I will always stand for our flag, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you, Jerry. Councilmember Cole.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Nothing.
Mayor Proten.
A couple things. South Platte Working Group did approve the East-West Connection document, and so, I'll get a final draft, or a final document of that to council as soon as I receive it. And we're still doing some draft work on the document regarding development considerations regarding budding up to open space trails and parks. The other thing that we decided to do is we are, we have reinvigorated our project list. The group always has a pretty dynamic project list that is compiled by all the municipalities, and that gets kind of, is kind of the guiding post for future decisions. So, one of the things I wanted them to do was to get that project list back up on the table so that we could see what was going on, what was, what was still kind of incomplete, what had been planned for, what people were looking at. And so, that is, that document will be then carried over to our planning and preparation for the priority list for open space trails and parks in Littleton. And Randy has agreed to sit, sit on the South Platte Working Group with me. There's permitted a, the city manager and an elected, so Randy's going to sit on that with me, and then the two of us will be working on putting this stuff together. So, and then the other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm the representative from council to the CML Policy Board, Policy Committee, and that is, we're starting to gear up on that, have my first meeting in October. So, I will be bringing back policy updates for the state legislature from CML, issues that they are. You also get the emails that'll give you the more thorough updates about what's going on, so anything that needs to be shared back, I'll make sure to make a mention of that in reports.
Thank you. I've got two things to mention. For those folks who like to walk the High Line Canal, they may have noticed that starting on the 23rd, it's got water. They started, they opened up the gates on the 23rd, they made no commitment to how long that'll run, but as we know, getting water in that canal really does, does help the vegetation, and anytime it's in there, we know that that might be the last time, because Denver will not commit to future run-ins. So, glad to see that. And I just want to take a moment to compliment staff, staff at all levels. Sometimes, the work here in the city gives opportunities for people to shine, and we did the budget preparation and the budget presentations, which involved all the directors and senior staff. And then, in addition to that, there's been some incidents out in our community that have been very demanding, and, you know, most folks don't know about them and that kind of thing, and I'm not going to take the time to mention them individually, but we have such tremendous staff working out there on, on those issues. I think it's appropriate to compliment them. They really showed up also with, with senior staff all showing up for the town hall, ready to, ready to speak. Now, Mr. Reister ended up being the one who talked on about 90% of them when the city manager wasn't, but it could have been any question, and it could have addressed any issue, and they were all prepared. I'm just so impressed, and I wanted to pass that on. And with that, we're adjourned at 7:54.
Good job.